I'd like to call this meeting the order and if you would stand with me and follow me in the pledge salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for coming. It's wonderful to see maybe not a packed house, but certainly not just looking at a mess of chairs. Our item number three is any citizen's desire and be heard. So at this time, anybody who'd like to say anything? Not hearing anybody. We will proceed on to item four, consideration and possible action on approving minutes of August 15th, 2016. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, consideration possible action on approving resolution accepting $127 donation from Gary Timmons to District Number One for road paving within Sherwood Lane Edition.
Mr. Chairman, if I might clarify that, I believe that is to pay for the announcements for the...
It was a combined, based on what was anticipated with the bid, they were a little short, so it makes that up plus pace publication costs.
Okay, publication costs is what I was...
I'm agreeing with you.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then item number six, consideration possible action on approving sealed bid 2017-7 for paving Sherwood Lane.
Board Commissioners, we opened this bid and tabled it. You had asked the homeowners or the rural road improvement district to give you a written recommendation. We have that. They have recommended accepting the Atlas painting bid as the lowest investment.
There were a couple of variations about this, which was...
They are accepting what was identified as option number two, which is two inches of type B asphalt laid in place, one tack, one coat of tack oil, and they are taking the option of the geotextile fabric for a total bid of $57,470. Or that's their recommendation to this board.
I don't have no problem with that.
I don't either. I may even accept their recommendation and select Atlas Option Two.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seven, consideration possible action on approving closing of the intersection of Lilly Lane, a road within Sleepy Meadow Edition, and Simpson Road, a county section line road.
Mr. Chairman.
Just a second. Mr. Chairman, I, we've been in contact with our Assistant ADA, and we've been back and forth on what the legal requirements are, if there's any legal statute or status on closing a road in a platted addition that's already been platted with the county. It's already been accepted by the county to plat, accepted. There's nothing that specifically addresses that, however, our Assistant District Attorney Barto has found in the statutes where the Board of Commissioners does have the right to regulate traffic off of county line roads. So we do have the authority to restrict access from the county line road onto Lilly Lane with the, with an action of the board. So the board does have the authorization to do that. I made a copy for both of you because I thought that that is something that we all should be aware of and have the reasoning behind that. There's some really good conversations in that letter, but the bottom line is that I believe after reading that, the Board of Commissioners does have the option to do that. Troy, do you have anything?
I do. Just to clarify, this is not an action to close or vacate a road.
Right.
In taking that action, it would have actually made Lilly Lane disappear, and that's not what was needed. So this is just to prevent at the intersection, and that was the question posed to the ADA was at the intersection, we're not vacating any roads at all. And I did bring a copy, it's small, of the plat, just so everyone was familiar. This is the addition. This is Lilly Lane that comes in and then L's off, and this is Simpson. So what's being discussed is this intersection and the prevention of traffic from Simpson Road being able to come down Lilly Lane here. And if you read in Lowell's opinion there, he agrees, we're not, we're not looking at vacating or closing or doing anything to Lilly Lane itself. It would, it would be some form of barrier or guardrail or something that would just prevent traffic from accessing through here. I think that's...
Yes ma'am. If I may, would that also prevent emergency services from going through that? Yes, yes it would. And I did have a call last evening and spoke with the fire chief responsible for that area. And of course, he's concerned that there's only one access road. There would be only one access into that addition. We have several in our district that are like that already, that were platted, which is one way in and one way out. And I can certainly understand, you know, first responders being cautious about, about closing that type of access. Discussed that also with the members of the homeowners associations prior to their petition for us to do this. And I don't remember, there was, did you bring a copy of that petition with you, Troy, or...
You know, I thought I did, but apparently I didn't.
That's okay. But there was, there was a great majority, I think it was like over three quarters of the homeowners had signed the petition to close that access off. If I could, I mean, if that answers your question, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to allow at this time the folks from the homeowners association that live there to kind of give their reasoning and as to why they want this road closed, or the access closed, not the road closed.
The primary reason is safety for our kids. We have no parks or any kind of facility for the kids to play, so they play in the, in the street. And there's a lot of kids, and there's 33 homes in this addition, and there's a lot of kids, and they all play up and down the street. So we get traffics coming off Simpson, and they come through at a pretty good rate of speed that is alarming to not just me but all the parents in the area. So we put in speed bumps trying to slow that down, and it worked for a while. But then now they are back and they're with a vengeance, and they come through there all the time. We also have a lot of problems with them trying to ignore the speed limit in there, so that's a real problem for us. All the homeowners, I think there was like 18 out of the 33 that signed that, some of them we just couldn't get. All of them were in agreement that that needs, with the exception of one. We had one that declined and said, "No, that's not a good idea." We've gone through this for about a two-year period trying to do something to just alleviate the traffic, keep them from basically destroying our roads, because they, they come through, we get lots of big trucks for some unknown reason. I have no reason, I have no idea why they come through. But they do come through, there's, it's out of their way, and so we get a lot of problems from that. We've talked to the trash people on this, we've gone in, made a deal with them, we all put our trash on one side of the road trying to alleviate the traffic they do through the area to keep our streets in better shape. And then we come back with these big trucks that come through. So we just need some kind of relief, and there's, there's nobody in that addition with the exception of two people, and one of them's in agreement with the closing, closing this, that use that access. All the homeowners in there go out on Broadway. So for us, it seems like it's the most sensible, logical thing to do. We have no problems with putting up some kind of a gate or helping the county with a gate or working with you guys in any way just to stop the traffic. So we're kind of in y'all's hands, we hope you'll feel like it's worth doing.
Are they just trying to avoid going on Simpson, do you think?
Part of the problem is their road's gravel. It goes blacks off up to the first street, and then from their back to our neighborhood it's gravel. So they like to avoid the gravel when it comes to our neighborhood.
We have no idea why they do it. We have no idea.
Well, it's probably, yeah. It's just a lock handle.
I just had an email from the fire chief down there, and he thought it would be a bad deal to close it.
Right.
Is my only thing to...
But if you put a gate up...
I called him last night at 3:02.
If they put a gate up and you had a lock on it, that they had access to that lock.
We would not be able to put a lock and let them cut it anytime they need it in there. You know, just to both cut and cut it.
And you're still gonna delay whatever kind of emergency services trying to come from that.
You know, we, we'll work with, any way we can, we will work with you.
I think if it was the board's decision to erect a barrier to restrict traffic turning onto that, that that information would be available to the first responders, and they would know that they're, they needed to go in off of Broadway and not on Simpson. I'm not sure it would delay that much. However, there is, there is possibility, like in all of our subdivisions that only have one access in and out, that during a storm, a tree could drop across there and restrict access, and that's where, you know, we get called out, our folks get called out to assist with the sheriff and the first responders in removing that stuff.
That's not unusual.
But in that case, if there was a gate, a locked gate, that could be unlocked for such an emergency.
And then there's not any trees that are close to the main entrance on this thing. You'd have to blow some distance to block it. The only thing that I could...
That's not a problem for a good distance.
The only thing that I could even comprehend is some kind of an auto accident or something right there. That would be the only thing.
Is this road county maintained?
No, no. The inside of that addition is not maintained by the county. We haven't accepted those roads, and they haven't asked us to do that. I think the gate would be a great idea, but people's gonna cut and get locked off all the time.
Well, I think that Lowell indicates that as far as the county, if I interpret it, and we've had so much back and forth with this, with Commissioner Goodman and Lowell and I, for the county's involvement, it's going to be placing a barrier on the county right-of-way, because Lilly Lane is within the addition and not a county main road. So really what you're looking at is whatever's going to be done on the county side of the right-of-way. And that said, whatever's constructed is going to become the responsibility, not only for the cost to install, but to make sure it's taken care of, of the commissioner of that district, which would be Commissioner Goodman. So if he wants to work to put a gate and a lock and worry about that, but ultimately the cost of burying that unless something were to change is going to be on him, and so the decision on how that's buried, if I understand from Lowell, is gonna fall to the commissioner.
What say you? You wanna do it? You know, the, the folks that live there in that addition, the majority of petitioned the board to do that, so I would say yes.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
I say a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Put it up. Whatever you want.
That's Marvin's job.
Oh, Marvin.
Thanks, Marvin.
We have a resolution.
Don't pay for it.
Remote control gate would be good.
That would be handy for pocket on shirt, wouldn't it? There you go. Flat remote. Like that.
I would lose the remote.
Nice arch gate.
Ooh.
Roman arch.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you all. If we may excuse, we can go.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Well, there goes half her crowd.
All right, that's all right.
Thank you.
You bet. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. You did a good job.
Well, I had some help. A lot of you there.
Nice to meet you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, item eight, we have a presentation to the board by a Mr. Byron Schlomack.
That's pretty good, that's pretty good pronunciation here.
Well, I do kinda try to do right with names. I study names quite a lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Those are paper, did I? Give you all the summary, somebody?
Thank you, sir.
Short summary of... Or did I give everybody, somebody a stack of summaries? I might have done that. No?
If I need to, I can run and make some.
I got myself confused here, but that's all right.
Follow me that for a minute, and I'll get more copies.
Oh, sure. Oh, here they are. Here they are. Do you need more copies for records?
I can make some. Well, as long as I have stuff for the minutes, and I can make any more if there are any that.
I was invited to do this presentation by Commissioner Goodman, and based on the release of this paper that I just handed out, I'm a, my name, as stated earlier, Byron Schlomack. I'm an economist. I work for the 1889 Institute, which is a relatively new think tank, and we're located in Oklahoma City. And we're a 501(c)(3). We analyze and develop state public policy on principles of limited and responsible government, free enterprise, and a robust civil society. We focus on, well, you could say it's not a lot of focus, because actually it was pretty broad, but most of our focus so far has been on education. We also look at state fiscal issues, free enterprise issues, welfare, and healthcare By way of background, I earned my PhD at Texas A&amp;M University. I started working in public policy over 20 years ago for a state representative in Texas. I worked for the Texas Public Policy Foundation after a stint doing research at the Controller's Office in Texas, and then was out in Arizona for seven and a half years, working for the Goldwater Institute. Now, here, and I actually live closer to my parents who live in North Texas than I did when I was in Austin, but, and, and glad to be here where people sound normal. As an economist, one of the things I, what I study more than anything else is just institutions, and the incentives that are inherent in institutions, and the benefits and costs of various institutions. And one of the things that economists have looked at carefully for a long time, since the day, well, actually before the days of Adam Smith, is free enterprise versus government-directed economic development and activity. And though evidence is overwhelming, I mean, we have all kinds of empirical evidence to show that free enterprise works far better. And obviously, this, this country, this state is largely based on free enterprise. There was a freedom of this, of the state's index produced not long ago, and Oklahoma actually fared pretty well in it. And it's better for overall economic development, people's prosperity is greater, and, and our overall freedom is enhanced by economic freedom. But there are institutions that we have that lower your score when it comes to economic freedom. And one of them is tax increment finance. Now, it's true that every state in the union except one, and that's Arizona, the state I recently, recently came from, has a tax increment finance law. And so this is, this is an institution that exists across the country. It originated in California in 1952, and it became really popular in the 70s after the federal government repealed, repealed funding for the, for blight projects for, for solving blight problems in various cities. And it's become a way, supposedly a costless way, of encouraging economic development in blighted areas. And if you read the Oklahoma statute, it really is aimed at blighted areas and not greenfield development. Overwhelmed, well, I'll say overwhelmingly, that's not really accurate, but very common, it is very common for TIF to be used with greenfield development, because there's nothing, there's nothing stopping local governments from doing it. And so it's abused to a great extent. The, an analogy I came up with, I haven't written it anywhere, but for TIF is that it sort of reshuffles economic debt, but it palms the aces for certain people. People who, who tend to be well-connected and wealth, and very, and very familiar with the, with the institution, and have an ability to use it where others can't. That's very often large corporations. Large corporations, I'm not the only person ever to have researched TIF, and lots of people have, and large corporations, it's been found, are heavily favored when it comes to TIF projects across the country, and no doubt as well here in, here in Oklahoma. On page four of the report, there's a paragraph in the bottom left corner that I think from an economic point of view really sums up the issue really well. It talks about four different studies that have rigorously looked into TIFs, and they, none of these originate in Oklahoma, but the TIF institution is basically the same across the states. It found that in Chicago, if anything, TIF communities that adopted TIF grew more slowly than communities that didn't. And that's overall. Now, it's not to say that a TIF district doesn't grow and prosper and do really well, but the community as a whole doesn't necessarily do that well. It talks about studies from Iowa that concluded basically the same thing, that the benefits don't outweigh the costs, and that it's essentially an entitlement to industry and housing developers. There are a number of TIFs in Oklahoma City, I'm sure you're aware, and they're always proposing more. Last I looked, there were, I think they had nine active TIFs, one in process, and something like six or seven now that are at least on the drawing board. And one of the problems, especially with the kinds of TIFs that Oklahoma City adopts, they always involve property taxes. Now, that is an area that's, where the impacts are kind of unique from state to state. And in Oklahoma, when the property tax is impacted, it's, it involves school property taxes. And the way the system works, it, TIFs actually drain a little bit of money. Each TIF drains a little bit of money that involves property taxes from the school finance Basically, the way the, the way school finance works is all the school districts have their property tax collections, then the legislature appropriates an amount of money on top of that, and that's the amount of money, and all the formulas are figured from that total amount of money. Well, when a TIF starts draining off money from school district, property tax proceeds, the amount of money goes down a little bit. It may be imperceptible compared to the entire amount for any one TIF, but it goes down a little bit. And what that does is it rejigger's all the formulas, and every school district in the state gets a little bit less money. And with enough TIFs, grabbing that property tax around the state, it can add up to substantial amount. How much is it? I don't know, because I have no idea. There's no central reporting for these TIF districts. Eventually, maybe if I get an intern, I'll be able to make enough Freedom of Information Act requests to all those counties and get a, get a census of this done. But the last time the Commerce Department did such a thing is 2011, and at that time the state had 48 TIFs. No doubt there are a lot more. So obviously, while the 1889 Institute does not advocate specific legislation or any specific proposal that's on the table in front of the legislature, in front of the county commissioners' court, we do recommend that some reforms be made to TIF, and that's gonna be at the state level. Legislature really needs to act on that. But one of the biggest things is greater transparency. And ultimately, as an economist who has looked at the evidence and is completely convinced that free enterprise, where everybody's competing on even playing field regardless of whether you're a big corporation or an entrepreneur, and regardless of where you're located within a community or a state, I think TIF ought to be repealed. Most legitimate use it has is if someone, if you use it as a way to pay back someone for, for privately funding some public infrastructure in order to make a project go, but even that can be done with traditional finance means. So I don't think TIF is really even necessary. Those are my remarks, my presentation. You have the paper, the summary, we have a website, and I'm always available by phone and email, so thank you for having me here. I'd be happy to answer.
Well, I appreciate your time. Do you think there is a good TIF district anywhere? Is there, is there a good TIF and a bad TIF?
As I said earlier, maybe the best TIF is, is one where a private company came in and helped finance some infrastructure. It could be a sewer expansion, or water expansion, or even streets that they financed, but they're public and, and ought to be public, and, and they, and it's completely legitimate to reimburse a private enterprise for making that kind of investment for you. And oftentimes, governments have to do that over time. You could do that with a TIF, and, and however, there are other methods. You can, you can just do that contractually from your existing tax base. And one of my recommendations to legislature is that local communities shouldn't be able to do TIFs by accessing other entities' tax bases, which they can right now, schools in particular. And when you look at the financial situation, the human cry about school finance, it seems particularly odd and ironic that that can happen.
Well, on a review committee, I mean, the schools come in and they sit on that review committee to decide, you know, if they wanna do the game or not.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. As I explained in the paper, it's such an increment, I mean, essentially, any given school district is gonna see very little impact from a TIF in their district. It could take a million dollars out of their property tax collections, but what happens is the state funding kind of slots in there to fill that up to a cer, certain extent. The, frankly, the entire formula system has to be rejiggered, and it is. The school finance office in, in Oklahoma City looks at a revised estimate of the, of the revenues and the appropriations, and they adjust accordingly. And so every school district, not just the home school district where the TIF is, every school district in the state shares an impact.
Mr. Schlomack, along those lines, you'd mentioned that this started in the state of California. Can you kind of expand on how, how that went for them and what happened?
Well, California, to this day, is, has the most TIFs of any state in the, in the country. And California has created an environment where they're very, very high cost, so they have very high cost of living. When you look at various measures of California and the amounts that they spend on any healthcare or anything else, very often they end up at the top of, of rankings. And in terms of income, they very often end up at the top of rankings. But when you start... But when you start adjusting for the cost of living, they go way, way down. And in some areas, we actually outspend them and outearn them. Oklahoma actually has a pretty good, high level of personal income when you adjust for cost of living compared to the rest of the states. We sell ourselves short badly. And part of the reason is that we've gotten on these sort of government regulatory and government-controlled bandwagons relatively late to our great benefit.
So how is Oklahoma TIF compared to California TIFs?
They all basically work the same across states. Now, I haven't studied California's system, anything like as closely as Oklahoma's or any other states, but they, they do access school taxes there as well. That is one area that nobody argues California is particularly way ahead, isn't, isn't school funding. They actually poorly fund their schools, comparatively speaking, especially when you adjust for cost of living. So, the biggest complaint you hear from California is that there's, there's just simply an issue of cronyism. The, it, it is a state that operates heavily on political connections.
Sir, on, on, on the California TIFs and such, it was my understanding that the, the state legislature has actually outlawed them now and that that has been verified by the California Supreme Court.
I'll have to look at that. I had not, I had not discovered that.
The economic development areas that were established by TIFs actually took the state of California to court and sued them over them trying to stop that. And the California Supreme Court actually upheld the, the state legislature's move to outlaw TIFs. So, TIFs have been done away from the state of California.
Um, okay, yes, I remember reading something, I remember some of that, but not the ultimate end. But I'll, I will definitely review and make sure I'm, I'm well versed on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, can, can I, how long, the TIFs impact in Oklahoma? How, how many years are TIFs generally set out? Two years, five years, 10 years?
Um, they vary. They can be up to 25 years. Some TIFs are only 10 years. And, but it varies from situation to situation, community to community.
Okay. So we have one TIF district that we didn't. How was that one compared to all the others?
Well, because of lack of transparency, I didn't study every TIF in the state. I didn't, I didn't try to make a judgment for how good every TIF is. As I would say, I would go back to my previous remarks, though, to the, to the, to the extent that it's helping to finance legitimate public infrastructure. And when I say legitimate, I'm not talking about an extension to a single business or an extension to a single residence. I'm talking about something that can be expanded and will impact additional areas. To the extent that it's helping the public, that, that the private entity is being paid back for funding public infrastructure, I think it's a lot more legitimate and a lot more healthier than, than other things. If you look at, you know, there's an example from, from Stillwater of them just basically handing over half a million dollars to Olive Garden to locate not very far from another Italian restaurant, which is now closed, you know, light safety and Broken Arrow. There are literally single buildings in Oklahoma City that are TIF.
But if you have underfunded infrastructure, that would benefit the populations along, in that area.
Here again, I would simply say this, if it's accessing, keep in mind that there is no evidence that when a TIF comes in, that a business that would not have existed in some form or fashion, maybe distributed across many businesses instead of just one, in the area, there's no evidence that entirely new business, entirely new development is brought into Oklahoma or into Oklahoma City or any other particular community by the TIF. What, what it does is it redistributes. What it does is it creates an advantage for that TIF district over every other business in the community. And part of the way it does that is by accessing other entities like the TIFs in Oklahoma City. They don't just access Oklahoma City's tax base, which is just sales tax. They also access the county property tax base and the school's property tax base. So that's a lot of extra money that they have to pour into that area. And yes, that's going to be a definite advantage, a definite advantage for those businesses that are located there. And that's just, that's just not the kind of healthy, truly pre-enterprise system that has produced the prosperity that we have in this state.
My TIF is one of your recognized.
I would like your opinion on a TIF that is, I understand that they were designed to be put in place in a blighted area, an area that is not doing well. Our TIF is on the corner of one of our most valuable assets in Logan County at I-35 and Highway 33. And it was done with a company for $150,000. This TIF was what they wanted and got. And talking to other assessors around, they don't understand why we did that TIF, why there couldn't have been a negotiation between Loves and some of these others to, instead of spending that money that it costs for this TIF, for, for borrowing it and all that, that Loves, no doubt, probably would have negotiated and done what they were going to do anyway because that was such a great area for them to be in. They wanted it badly. So what is your opinion on something like that? Should we try to negotiate with these companies coming in first before you do a TIF or?
Well, and Tish, Tish, I mean, that isn't the whole scope of that.
Well, I know that may not be the whole scope.
And it wasn't, I mean, you, you, you narrowed it down to one particular company, whereas this is infrastructure that is benefiting a lot of others, those that come in here in the future. So I don't.
I understand.
Understand.
Well, my quote may not have been spoken right. I understand the value of the infrastructure needing to be, so that we can grow.
Right.
But my point is, couldn't we have negotiated with these companies that wanted to buy here anyway and be there to help with that infrastructure instead of just run down and do a TIF immediately or whatever we did? Did we negotiate with them to see how they would feel about helping out, you know? That's my question.
So that'd be fine for Valero's, no problem.
If I may, Mr. Slomack.
No, that's not what I meant at all.
I think, I think to her point was.
No, it isn't.
The.
No, it isn't.
I think to the assessor's point and the question, the original question had to do with blighted areas and the, and the state law as, as far as TIFs concerned, there's, there's something called the butt forth clause and.
Right.
Yeah, but, but for the TIF, this development would not have happened. And, and I think that's where a lot of, some of these shady developers take advantage of that, where something would have happened anyway. And I think that was kind of the, the point of what she addressed. Could you kind of speak to that?
Yeah, and TIF isn't the only type of thing being used here. There are other states where they regularly do tax abatements and other kinds of deals where you have, you literally have companies that, there's been very little fessing up to this. But I have no doubt, because you look at their, their decisions and the timing of their decision, they know where they want to locate, but then they start playing communities off of each other in a bidding war for things like TIFs, tax abatements and other special favors or just outright grants of land. But no, TIF was not intended for greenfield development. And I'm talking about, here you have virgin territory and you use a TIF to get it, to, to attract businesses or get businesses to, to develop there. Again, I will say that if you're going to use public resources to get development in a virgin territory done, which, which you do, there are different ways to access those resources. The usual way is to do things like bond issues, where you have votes of the people and you have general community buy-in. TIF short-circuits that system completely. And that's one of its biggest, one of my, institutionally, one of my biggest issues with it is the lack of transparency, that that helps engender where, okay, we're going to locate this single business and we don't really have any idea of a single business, but nevertheless, there's maybe been infrastructure installed that others can, can, can install. What are the plans? I mean, do others have immediate plans to develop around that business and use that infrastructure? And very often, these things are done without any knowledge of that. So no, I, it starts getting really fishy when, when you get into those areas. That's the most legitimate use of TIF, but again, I would suggest that traditional means be used for, for those kinds of developments.
May I? I just want to clarify something that may have gotten confused, especially with what the assessor was saying. The Loves TIF, the one that does exist in Logan County today, the value of the public infrastructure that Loves put in was a million dollars because they had to do Midwest, they paid for the removal, and they are being reimbursed a total of $300,000, 150 from Logan County and 150 from the city of Guthrie. So that still leaves Loves' investment in public infrastructure out of their pockets at $700,000. That opened that up. And now Valero has been able to tap that line, which will allow them, if they decide to go forward with their hotel, that they couldn't without it. So the TIF that, the value that the public received in public infrastructure was minimal with public dollars. Loves bore most of the cost.
May I add that part of the cost too was the, the easement going on their property for their competitor across the street to lay his line, which would not have happened otherwise.
Question?
Yes. So Loves would not have made the investment, held all up on this $300,000 when they already put in 700,000? They would not have done the project? Loves would not have gone in had they not received the TIF?
I don't, I don't think they'd have made it. The federal line, it'd been their line.
It'd been their line, there wouldn't have been any easement to it.
But that would have been an issue the city of Guthrie would have addressed, not the county.
Well, I personally thought that was a good TIF. We did have a group come to us down on I-35 and Waterloo Road and wanting to do a TIF district, and I thought that was a terrible deal. They wanted us to put in private roads and I think anytime you keep it on a, for the public, I'm not too opposed to it, but I don't like a, a 10-year TIF. I think we need to keep them short here in Logan County, a five-year payout or.
Well, and I, and again, I would be, and I don't know all the details on the financing of this particular TIF, but I would simply urge you to, to only access the tax base of the, of the governmental entities that are, you know, have a true interest in it. You can argue that schools do well because they're going to get all this additional, I guess maybe, they can benefit on the bonding side more than anything else in terms of their, their tax base with their, with their bonding rates. But the fact is, it's, that it's having a statewide impact and it's, it's hard to argue that, well, we ought to hamstring ourselves for the state while Oklahoma City isn't. But obviously, I'm making efforts to bring this issue to the attention of the Oklahoma legislature and hopefully, hopefully that that will be rolled back by the legislature.
All right. Any more questions?
Thank you for having me here. I appreciate it. It was a very good discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Good to meet you all.
Good to meet you.
Item number nine, consideration of possible action on approving a resolution declaring the intent for the Board of Commissioners of Logan County to consider the designation of a portion of the county as a statutory reinvestment area and to consider creation of a related tax increment district pursuant to Oklahoma law, creating Logan County Local Development Act Review Committee, determining membership of the review committee, designating manner and term of appointment of committee members, providing them meetings of the review committee, establishing officers, determining right, voting rights in quorum, directing the review committee to consider proposed project plans and to make any findings and recommendations required by law and containing other provisions relating thereto.
Chairman, before you proceed, it is your choice, but some gentleman has just had a question before you.
Back to the Loves TIF, how, based, about how much time is left for it to be paid off?
That would be a question.
It's five years.
It's a five-year capture period.
And it started.
It hasn't been the first year.
Has not even started yet.
This has been the first year.
Okay, so it's five years.
Right. Should have been last year, but it was this year.
Okay.
Okay. Dan, I guess you're up. I've got some material here, but just for the scope of the plan.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. It's my privilege today to present a proposed resolution that would establish a review committee to study a proposal for a tax increment district within Logan County. This is the same resolution format that we've used in the past. You've actually seen this resolution before at a meeting in June, I believe it, if it was. Does everyone have a copy of the resolution? Do you need a copy?
I, you emailed that copy a month or so ago.
Okay. Same resolution, we've changed the date at the end. The resolution is the legal authority to start the process of this body considering the creation of a tax increment district. I want to point out that this resolution does not form a tax increment district, it merely says that the commissioners are going to study the merits of creating a tax increment district. If this resolution is adopted today, then there'll be a project plan prepared and the review committee established, the review committee will study the project plan and report back to this body with their findings and recommendations. Only after that, review committee has reported back and two public hearings are held in this body, they consider actually creating a tax increment district. So we're a long way from, from creating a district just simply by adoption of this resolution. But it is the process that the statute lays out and the language of the resolution is substantially identical to the resolutions you've adopted in the past. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the resolution or the process.
I don't have any questions regarding the resolution or the process. I did have a question to the chairman, to what purpose would a statutory reinvestment area be considered under this?
It would be considered for the purpose of paving two miles of county-lined road inside the county easement only.
And what would, what would be the way that the, a tax increment finance area would support that? I mean, where, where, where are you going to get the money?
I mean, where are you going to get the money for that?
All right. If you will take a look at your map, this is a section starting at I-35 and Charter Oak Road, and it would extend to Douglas and Charter Oak Road. If you will look just to the right of Douglas, there is a new school that will be brought in there. The district that's being developed, the area that's being developed, is on the south side of Charter Oak, midway between Douglas and Midwest. So it's that 80 acres there, which half that has started, and we're expecting after the first of the year, approximately 100 houses with an approximate value of $245,000 each. Now, we don't know exactly how much of this would, of their property tax we generated would produce, but our rough, very rough guesstimate is $2,000 per year for 100 houses. Grand total of 152. The developer for that paved from just past his, and paid for it, we accepted that resolution for $85,000, paved from the, just the east of his access over to Midwest. This fulfills the requirement for FHA loans, and he is done with any kind of financing for that road. He will not finance anything more than that, and he is good to go and is already selling some houses in there. And I'm sure with the new school going in in '18, that it will definitely fill up. So we still have that half a mile going from the entry of his addition over to Douglas. There's a possibility of a commercial area on that northeast corner of this, so I kind of drew that line, including that 160 acres where the school is going. And then that would redo the one mile between Midwest and Pine, which has two water lines, a six-inch on one, on the south side of the road, an eight-inch line on the north side of the road. It has several large telephone cables, including a fiber optic cable, and it's heavily overgrown with very large trees. And then there would be that half mile going on to the west there towards I-35. So that's a grand total of two miles that I would like to have really beefed up. And that would entail putting CKD, mixing CKD with that to a depth of eight inches. It would include a five inches of asphalt on top of that. And then, striking, it also would include concrete intersections, which you'll see an estimate there of $43,000 per intersection. That would be rebarned for six-inch, that would exceed cities and communities, et cetera, et cetera, because there'll be a lot of truck traffic coming on that particular road for developments that are going to occur, I believe, because this is just to the north. It's underdeveloped for the population we currently have. It's underdeveloped. It's been underdeveloped in the past, and if we are unable to get this, it will continue to be undeveloped in the future. The best that we can do is using the sales tax revenue or the rather remote possibility that we can get some of the property tax that the county receives to put on it, but it would take a number of years. With the school coming in, that would really help school buses. Also, on the northwest corner of Douglas and Charter Oak is Woodcrest Fire Department, who is getting ready to, we believe, to build a new building on that acreage. And for them to not have to go on dirt gravel or these chips hill roads that have been in there for 40 years, it would be very advantageous to theirs, as well as the school's vehicles, and allow them to have services going, emergency services going to them. And then we have quite a few acres in here that we feel like with the growth of Edmund on the east side of I-35, with the prospect of Waterloo getting beefed up from I-35 up to Pine, and as such as that, we believe that all these areas in here are ripe for development that will not be developed with the type of roads that we have right now. The developers see better places in other areas wherein, yes, they either are supported or there's denser population. So it's my belief that this developer, he may get a little bit out of it, but who is really going to benefit from this road is going to be the population, the school, and the fire department, and so on. Looking to see what we can do. Our estimates here, only one mile I didn't include in your write-up here, but I was trying to get asked by him to give me an estimate on that. We cannot pull trees out of there without damaging the utilities that are in there. And so his, what, maximum estimate is $95,000 for removals trees. I believe we can get him down quite a lot more than that if we have some county participation in that. Up till now, well, actually, up until things changed with ODOT, I had that on the CIRB plan for an overlay. But an overlay would have been about $350,000 per mile. But with all these utilities on both sides, and if you now, with their change in their standards, we now have to push all that back, and we're probably looking at, in the neighborhood, $2 million per mile. And there's very serious doubt that we could get any kind of matching or be able to get an SDP for that, so I don't see where we're going to be able to do what we need to do there with the current funding we have on the counties, so...
Mr. Chairman, I think my question was to what purpose, and I think you answered that, and that is to establish a tax increment district around a housing development that is already going to be put in place, that's already started. And so that is definitely not a blighted area. And the other thing that concerns me about, excuse me, the other thing that concerns me about that is that we're talking about doing a tax increment for property taxes in a housing addition that's already going to be developed. That will bring in new seats to the school system while bleeding off the property taxes to support that in the schools. That seems to be a little bit outside of the scope of the TIF, as far as I'm concerned. If, I mean, the things that you described about the roads and building roads in the county are something that all of us have to deal with. I mean, if it's that, if it's that good an idea, then I would propose that you look at floating a bond issue with a vote of the people to pay for that.
For the entire county?
No, for your project.
You're talking about a bond issue for the county?
Yeah, county bond issue for your project, a vote of the people.
I understand. Let me quote to you out of Article 10, 6C, item C. "The legislature by law may authorize any city, town, or county to plan, finance, and carry out the development or redevelopment of areas determined by the governing body of such city, town, or county to be unproductive, undeveloped, underdeveloped, or blighted." So your requirement for blighted area is only one of the parameters that needs to be considered, and I may also cite that this was a vote of the state of Oklahoma people. It is in the Constitution, and this is what they intended. So until this gets changed, because they have decided that was an error, I believe that we can proceed on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I...
And if I may, I'm not quite finished.
All right, go ahead.
We have a school coming. That school is going to get developed. When you have a school coming in, I guarantee you, that whole area is going to explode. The traffic counts are high, they're getting higher, and there is no funding of the sales tax or whatever we can get to be able to fund that. Now, I kind of wonder about changes and things, but I know that our state representative, Jason Murphy, was all about with the increase in property tax revenue in the county because of paved roads, that the increase in property tax funding to the general government, that increase, his suggestion was we take half of that and put that on the roads. Now, that, again, is taken from others, but he's been on that trip for quite some time. And I agree that property tax can be used if it's to the benefit of the schools, emergency services, and the population at large. So I believe that this does meet all the criteria of what I would consider to be a very good and a very conservative TIF. None of this money goes back to a contractor other than those contractors who will be building that road. So no private entities other than those.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
You quoted the statute. There's also a part of that statute that talks about, it's called the but-for clause, and that basically says that but for a TIF being established, that that development would not happen, and this clearly does not fall in that realm. That's all I have to say. Thank you, sir.
I would make the motion that we accept this resolution to establish a review committee.
I'll second for a review committee on it to do the study.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. District is...
No, it is not.
Committee, committee is a sound to be...
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
If I may...
Dan, did you bring the copies of that? I made one. Do I need, do you need more than, I just need one original?
You going to be in session on that? Which one of the board, which one, which one do you think...
I think the chairman, by law, says on it.
That's helpful.
Am I correct in that? Now they can pick anyone?
That's a fact. My district...
I'm sorry. Resolutions for the chairman to nominate someone for commissioners to it.
I missed, though, I was thinking from the last one.
This is signed by all of us, I mean, by money too.
It's just set for the chairman.
Dan, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I'll scan an email.
Thank you.
Item 10, consideration possible action on selection of Logan County representative to the Logan County Local Development Act Review Committee.
I'll move with point mine. It's his district, his little project.
I'll second. All those in favor?
I'll save it for the end. When we get down to the end, I do have a comment about it, though.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, oh, those opposed.
Upstate.
Motion carries.
You got a comment about it, or you want to wait until the...
I'll wait till the end.
All right. Item 11, consideration possible action of review, adjustment, and approval of the draft 15 to 16 financial statements, 16 to 17 county estimate of needs.
Chairman?
Yes?
Before you read all this, I just wanted to point out to you that we don't have the budget yet, so I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I move again that we table this until such time as the budget analysts that we are due this force can produce a budget for us.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Item 12, consideration possible action on approving fiscal year 16, 17 juvenile detention contracts of the following: community works for Cleveland County Regional Juvenile and community works for Potlottoman County Juvenile Detention Centers. Want to look at them?
No, I'll move with...
This for sure.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right, that's done. Item 13, consideration possible action on approving fiscal year 16, 17 general mutual cooperative agreement with Oklahoma County for the construction, improvement, repair, and maintenance of common section line roads or bridges between Logan County and Oklahoma County.
Commissioners, this is just a renewal from the one we did last year that says that both counties may participate mutually for repairs to the county line things. If there were to be a project, we would do a separate specific agreement per project. This is just the overall agreement to work together.
I'll move with you through. Second.
All favor. Aye. Motion carries.
Money, that reminds me, probably want to redo the one with Kingfisher County as well.
Yes, we do. Be nice to have one in Lincoln County.
With that being said, I got to send a little email to talk to their attorney that had some...
well, which, Marty, I'm glad you kept some in reserve, as you said earlier, on our serve because this kind of stuff always happens. This bridge started out at $600,000 was the estimate, and then it went to $800,000, and then ODOT said, well, it could go to a million, and now it's a little over a million, almost a million two. Hopefully, we can get it built before it gets to be a million five.
You jump $200,000 in two weeks?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's been my argument the whole, the whole time, this five-year plan, ODOT wants to add, then they want our engineers to do a scope, you know, what it's going-
Right, and for us to sign up for it.
In five years, it ain't going to matter what the scope is to be.
That's why, that's why counties need to be receiving the served money directly to the counties.
Just give us the money and let us do our job.
That's right.
We submitted served two weeks ago, that bridge at a million dollars, that's what we need.
Then Mike would move a TIF district.
Yeah. We do what we need to do.
That's a fact. I move we approve the change.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We need to sign this back resolution as well.
Well, yeah, I guess I didn't realize it was. Oh, it's not on one set, it's on one set, but not on another set. Yeah, and I'll make a copy and attach it to this.
So, this, this is not, this 1.1 might not be set in stone?
No.
No. Is there a re-
There's a back date.
That's not a set pass for it.
I think you signed that one.
Forgot that one. I didn't get this one.
Oh, okay, there's the resolution, it was.
There's three of us on this one.
And there's two copies. You can save the church for a copy.
That goes.
So, Marvin, I need to go back on to our leisure and adjust that for Cottonwood Creek, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I believe so.
Consideration possible action on proving resolution exposing equipment for District Number Three.
Please, Chairman. I've got office chairs that's been on inventory forever, then I'm sure that I even there, we're just trying to clean up our inventory. Ghostedgers, but don't even have to be on inventory.
Yeah, I've had that discussion with Troy, myself.
Just trying to clean it up.
I move with you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Troy, talk about that ledger. I might take a copy of that and show them down in South, how the ledger looks.
You're welcome to-
Oh, our served ledger.
The one that I put together?
Yeah. Well, if you're not a Dixiecrat, you don't understand how they think, but it's kind of different.
I think it's been helpful for everyone to have it spread out that way.
It's helpful for us.
That's what I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry to interrupt.
You're fine. Item 16, consideration possible action approving the following permanent road crossing permit for cost communication, Logan County Rural Water One and Superior Pipeline County Company. So, the five. They're going through your area there, Marty, I think, on that pipeline.
I think some of yours.
Yeah, the Logan County portion.
Looks like the COGS goes to District One, Logan County Rural One will be in District Two, and Superior Pipeline District Three.
And I don't know, the way this language is on the rural water line is like, good Lord. I visited with Buddy Thompson about it, and I think it's doable, but how it is on there and how it is in here or something, I really want to study a little more.
If you don't mind, I can start the comments announcements by the board while we're signing all these.
You know, as chairman of the board, I don't have a problem with that.
Yesterday at our CED meeting, I know you guys were there, but Troy wasn't, we had on our agenda to approve a lease agreement with Oklahoma County for $5,000 something a year for office space, and they had an option to do it with Logan County for a dollar a year. Well, the majority of the board wants to pay Oklahoma County $5,000 a year, and use up more taxpayers' money. But the secretary miscounted the vote, so they said it was a tie, and so it's back on the agenda for next month.
Marty, if I may, I think the way that happened was the representative from Oklahoma County that sits on that board, he also sits on the board that rents out that space, so he abstained from voting. There were two noes and three yeses, so there was only six board members, not seven, that attended that meeting. And so, it was, it was a tie, so there wasn't any action, and they did push it because of that. My understanding is that Murray County is also leaving CED five.
And they're going to a different CED?
I don't know, I haven't heard yet.
Yeah, they're going to rope you into that. But anyway, that's how our tax money's been spent in the CED world.
Again, that was a Dixiecrat vote, by the way.
Back on the TIF districts, I do believe that there are some good TIF districts, and I believe there's a lot of bad TIF districts. But I don't think I would ever support one that went over five years. I'm not dragging out like California have a 20-year test. But I really don't think that you want to have the ink from it compared to that project. That's just my opinion. Certainly not as educated one as the fellow that comes to speak.
I'm going to have to sign those on this step down for security.
I was really shocked at the CED meeting that's even a question, $5,000 or a dollar?
Well, the thing that shocked me was, you know, I questioned the fellow that said he wanted to do that, and he's the one that, I guess-
Runs the show.
Yeah, runs the show, and said, he said we should do that, and then I asked him, why would you want to spend $5,000 extra? And he said, because I don't want to have to drive to Guthrie to meet with her. And my comment was, well, $5,000 is paid for a lot of fuel, and she doesn't have to meet with, in Guthrie, she can meet with anywhere. She can actually drive from Oklahoma City down to South Oklahoma where they're from to meet. And his response was, I don't want to argue with you, and this is what I want to do.
How many makes up an office in that, in that office?
One.
That's the least of any CED district setting.
Yeah, the, in the, I've been messing with the CEDs for quite a while since I've been in office, and I have never, ever had to drive to her office to do anything. We did everything by email or telephone.
I haven't either.
You know, they, and what, really what aggravated me was the other day when she was up here for our five-year plan, I offered to take her for a tour of the office space over there. She said, no, because the board don't want that. And I said, well, if you don't sell on the board, I mean-
She said the board wouldn't approve it.
But yesterday before our meeting, they had a big tour of Oklahoma County's building, you know, she wanted to go see it, but they didn't even want to see ours, and she was a half a block from it. I don't know.
That's what ACOG is locating, relocating, and I think that was a large consideration.
Well, I think-
I think that $5,000 is a large consideration, I'd say.
I think what we ought to do is partner, pay ACOG to manage our CED. At the end of the day, that's who's going to do it anyway, or-
I agree.
Well, then it might be a good move because from that standpoint, they can see what she does, and then we can just move it in there.
I think what Marty was saying was pay ACOG, not her.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, so they're moving in with ACOG, they'll be able to see and do everything. Our, our members of the CED may see that, hey, we do have an option here, and let's just move it in there with ACOG and do it.
I think we got the pipelines across the-
Did we take action?
I'll move with you through, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17, consideration possible action on approving ingress egress agreement with John Shuguru, Green Oak Curse Three, Block Six, Lot Four for disposing of wood chips for District Number One.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're doing some work over on Ascension Road, or clearing that tree line over there that was going to cost us like $80,000, I don't remember what the bid was, but we decided to take that on ourselves, and one of the residents in that area asked if he could have the wood chips instead of us having to haul them out. So, it benefits the county and, and the landowner for us to approve this.
I'll make the motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration possible action on resolution appointing for requisition officers.
Concerning possible action on resolution appointing receiving officers. I have just one from sheriff's office. Marvin?
Yes, ma'am.
Page two.
I signed.
That's the way it came over. I need to get Tara to resize that so it doesn't happen.
I signed on two.
All right.
Yeah, needs a space taken out somewhere, maybe on the-
I'll make the motion, we approve, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 20, consideration possible action on-
Hang on.
Dan, I can speak to the chairman of the board, but if y'all got something, y'all want to say, I can certainly visit with you while we're signing all these.
Can I talk, can you sign at the same time?
Yeah. Says this will be her, get her.
I appreciate you guys and the work that you do, and I know with the TIFs, you've got a lot of evaluation to do, and I don't fully understand it all, and I don't think any of us do, we get parts of it, but when things get that confusing, I like to go back to the simple thing of, are we showing favoritism or not? And I think in this case, we are, we're favorite, we're fighting, we're putting favorites on where that money's spent, and I think you're right, you want to see that stuff played, but Mike, if you'll listen to your defense of why that that's a viable place to do it, it's all because it's going to develop, you've said it, it's going to develop, it will be developed, and we can develop that in ways without doing a TIF, and I really recommend you, you look at that. I know, I know it's a tough decision, and that these guys worded in such a way that it's convoluted and looks confusing, but in the overall thing, you got to evaluate, are we showing favoritism or not, and would it pass the vote of the people? And I, I don't think it would. You know, the other thing is, is look at the guys there, you got to consider, you're paying those guys for setting up that TIF. Those two attorneys sat here, they sit through the meeting, they make the presentation, they tell you where to sign the line, they hold your hand and walk your hand through it, and I just, I'm very concerned with the character of the men that are setting these things up. I think that's the best way to judge these things, is to really look at who's behind it and where are they doing it. So, I'm, I'd encourage you, Chairman, to really evaluate that.
Well, then I will agree that, yes, you do not understand, and therefore, if you want to talk about that afterwards, we can do that.
Okay. All right.
These are transfers-
Thank you, Dan.
Of appropriations, the board signs here. Marvin?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the one I spoke to you about, I put a sticker, so I'll need you to sign here as the officer for this transfer as well as-
All right. Thank you very much.
Did I sign?
No, Marvin's supposed to sign there, not you.
I'm sorry.
He didn't focus.
I didn't.
I've got a question. How many people are on the, that will be on this committee to evaluate the TIFs? Is there a number prescribed?
Yeah, it's prescribed by law.
It's based on the taxing entities of that area, so the Health Department, Guthrie Schools, the VOTEC, the EMS District, the County will all have a representative on the, on the, make up the review committee.
I believe as the chairman of that committee, which will be me.
And that's where I spoke in error, and I will correct it when I said that the representative is the chair, what I was correct, just is whatever representative is selected to represent the county is the chairman of the review committee.
So, I believe the way the law raises is that I make a selection of seven individuals, and then the committee goes three of those seven individuals and three-
For an at-large.
For an at-large. Otherwise, the members are those who receive funding from property tax. That would be Guthrie School in this instance, that would be Bree and VOTEC, that would be the Health Department, who else?
The County and three at-large members.
The County and three at-large members.
I may, I think we need to look at our handbook again. I think we ought to put some more policies in place. Well, just on-
Do you not have enough to do now?
Just on accidents. I mean, I just recently, one of my guys had an accident where I can, I don't know that it's in our handbook, and I don't know that it has to be, but-
They all sign a drug testing policy when we're hired. The difference is that a DOT license has-
So the Health Department, Guthrie Schools, the VOTEC, the EMS District, the County, will all have a representative on the, on the, make up the review committee.
And I believe as the Chairman of that committee, which will be me.
And that's where I spoke in here, and I will correct it when I said that the representative is the Chairman, what I, what's correct, just is whatever representative is selected to represent the County is the Chairman of the Review Committee.
So I believe the way the law raises that, I make a selection of seven individuals, and then the committee goes through those seven individuals and.
For an at-large.
For an at-large. Otherwise, the members are those who receive funding from property packs. That would be Guthrie School in this instance, that would be Brady and VOTEC, that would be the Health Department, who else?
The County and three at-large members.
The County and three at-large members.
I may, I think we need to look at our handbook again. I think we ought to put some more policies in place.
Or?
Well, just on. Do you not have enough to do now? Just on accidents. I mean, I, I just recently, one of my guys had an accident wrecking. I don't know that it's in our handbook, and I don't know that it has to be, but.
They all sign a drug testing policy when we're hired. The difference is that a DOT license has, it signs for a different part of the drug test, but all employees sign to be drug tested.
So, so do we need to have a policy stating if they have an accident, automatically?
I don't know if that's covered in that handbook, that's issued by Athol for the drug and testing, but that would probably be where it already is. Let's look and see if it's already addressed, Monty.
I think, I think, yeah. I think if you have an employee that has an accident, you as the.
For cause.
Yeah. You, you can on your own decision say that they need to go get a drug test, and that's already covered, I believe.
Blankets.
In what our policies are.
Dale Breck explained in that one meeting that we had several years ago, that any of us as officers and employers can, for just cause, immediately send an employee for a drug and alcohol test. If something has come up that has led us to be suspicious in any way, we have the right to do that. I think having an accident qualifies for that, you want to make sure that that wouldn't.
It doesn't have to be a motor accident either.
Correct.
Especially if you find a joint fracture or something. By the way, I had to buy some new belts for the zipper. The asphalt zipper. And apparently, you can't just run down those rallies and buy some belts for that.
Bet on it.
Because those are, those require Kevlar reinforced, double five belt. Five belts on one, I mean, there's five certain things on one belt altogether, better Kevlar reinforced, and takes two of those, and they're six hundred dollars a piece.
Cool, planted.
Well, at least it's got new belts on it now. You had a chance to try out that new double roller you had on?
I have. We laid a half a mile the other day, it was still nice. No problems.
So when, when you lay asphalt like that, do you have the asphalt company deliver it to you? That's, yeah, that's, that seemed to be the best way to do it, as far as I can, because they don't have the trucks, they don't have the trucks to do that.
So you think that's, what, about five dollars a ton difference?
Yeah, well, depends on what zone you're in.
Yeah.
I mean, mine's always higher than yours. I can tell you, I laid a half mile the other day, it cost me forty-two thousand.
That's not bad.
Three inch. I went two and a half.
Two and a half.
Actually, that's.
I reversed thirty-eight thousand off the reed ground.
I think that's how long I do that Indian reed in, is in-house. Then I have some other shorter sections of rose that I like to overlay.
I really think in a lot of y'all's areas, that you could probably get it laid cheaper than what I can buy in my area.
And that's why I just looked, the bid that you have awarded today, turn a half mile at Sherwood Lane, them laying it in place, just the asphalt at two inches was forty-four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
That's how much, half a mile.
Yeah, right at a half a mile, yeah.
I'm out on a half.
But you're so far north that the price goes up because of the distance.
Right.
That's tricky. And they got to keep a warming blanket on it.
They're tricky.
Yeah.
But yeah, the rover was really nice.
First time you used it.
Didn't have to stop work on it. Just not regular, regular project.
Do you use your little rover, your driveways or anything like that?
Yeah, we got a small one that we use.
I mean, did you use it on?
On this?
Not at all, just the big one. I was thinking it'd be your good for like the driveways and stuff, smaller one than I have. I don't know.
Selection board claim.
You want another one, I'm asking.
Court fund utilities.
Daniel?
Yes?
I guess so.
No, you said it back.
I don't have the alcohol beverage tax from the treasurer, so I'll have to put it on a different entity. So, they're not done yet down there, but that will, when he's finished, will conclude the consent.
Let me put some yams on here.
I consent, but you consent. Kind of sucks. Health care's expensive. Sure is. Is that for a month's term?
They put the blanket, they may not necessarily spend that, but it, it's fairly high, however, it does include all of their medication and their daily nurse stuff, so it's not just physician. However, this state may be in lots of trouble with Obamacare anyway, so.
I think the whole nation's in trouble with Obamacare.
Well, United and Etna have pulled out of the exchange, which leaves Blue Cross Blue Share Health as the only healthcare provider on the exchange. However, they have put in a request for a fifty-six percent rate increase.
Increase, yes.
That they're waiting for the feds to approve before they pull out and leave nobody on the exchange in the state of Oklahoma.
Why is this a duty?
This is one of the reasons why.
This is their plan in progress.
Government shouldn't be involved in that stuff. Yep.
Sure makes that five thousand on rent look pretty small when you look at the numbers on health insurance. Sad.
ACOG is handling it, cover.
We don't want a CED to go to ACOG, we want the money to come to us.
Well, I'm talking about. Yes, so Troy can keep track of it for us. I mean, that's what.
You know, those ledgers that I do, I just kind of dreamed them up just as, as trying to be helpful, but if you want them changed in any way or laid out differently or anything, just, you know.
No, I think you're doing a great job on that.
Thank you.
The thing is that, you don't have it.
Well, that's what started the whole monster mess last year.
Exactly. Well, I mean, we get, we get replies like, well, nobody's ever asked that question before. How much money do we have? Well, nobody's ever asked that question before. Really. I'm done.
I'll move with approved. Let's hand it to Jim items. All those in favor? Aye. Officer Carey. Consideration possible action on approving claims.
For the ledger, we kept finding money, millions of dollars though for us.
Yes, yes.
Having schools too, they're finding money. Can't find any more money now that it is.
That was three million dollars.
Yeah.
And then, then what I thought was really interesting and really good for us is that they came up and finally decided to tell us how much cash we had for this year's served plan. It was what, six point two million?
Six five.
Six point five million dollars that we could spend this year. And that's when good ideas started popping out.
Confuse it with the five-year plan.
They need to do away with that, the five-year, because none of it holds, and it's more confusing than.
Well, how much money do you spend out of that? Paying the engineers to scope the projects and.
And then rescope them?
And then rescope it.
Oh, and then you scope a project that you can't afford to do, so you're out the money for that?
The way we worked.
And you don't do the project.
Ended it this year.
Engineers always get paid.
And it was happenstance that it did. Walk in, tell us how much cash is here to spend between now and June the thirty-fourth, or June the thirtieth, and let us just deal with that, and then next year, we'll see how much more money we get.
The thing I find interesting along those lines is that the engineers always get paid, and, and that sounds like a cliche, but that's true. And the reason for that is that the folks that work at ODOT are all engineers. And the folks that work at the CED, or what's that, OCCEDV, what, whatever it is, off of the Association of Chemical Commissioners, those guys are retired engineers from ODOT.
Yep.
You know, and so, and so you think they're going to be in favor of us getting that served money pushed down to the counties? No, they're not, because there's going to be portions of that little part of government that isn't going to get funded anymore, and they won't have anything to do.
That, one down the queue, do I think they're paying fifty-five dollars an hour? As a CED manager.
Fifty-five dollars an hour?
As a full-time forty-hour physician, or just as a part-timer?
Well, he keeps track of his overtime.
Oh, and he's on overtime. I imagine.
Now, what, what's that?
You realize that's more than twice what you guys operate roads and bridges in your districts for, as a wage annually?
Trying to think, what's that? Who's president of PTA or Acton Manor? Roy.
Roy.
He's one of those. How great, how great a deal they got.
Oh, yeah. That's pretty level.
Must be his brother-in-law. Preval, we got that whole board's.
All right, are we ready for?
Do we do claims?
No, we need a.
I'll move with approved.
All in favor? Aye. And this heads up, I'm not having overage, because I underestimated my asphalt.
I've got one coming too.
It happens.
Go ahead and kick me now.
I think it's about ten bucks, but I got one coming.
Any citizen desire to be heard?
I was just going to say that, but we just had that.
I, I explore my piece, thank you.
All right, comments, announcements, questions by the Board?
I pretty much done all mine.
I've come to myself, done too.
I'd say we adjourn, so.
Officer Carey.